Fall to order, the work session for the Cochise County Board of Supervisors. Today is Thursday, March 20th. We are meeting in the supervisors' hearing room pursuant to ARS 38431.02H. Public will have access to the meeting room 15 minutes prior. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the board will attend and present or by Microsoft Teams. The public also has the same means to attend. Work sessions are a time for the county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comments will not be taken. We'll begin with a roll call vote. District one.
Crosby is here.
District.
I'm not voting.
Oh, because he always say vote.
Oh, roll call vote. Oh, roll call, I'm sorry. Gotcha. District two.
Here.
District, District three, Antonori's here. All supervisors are present and in person. We'll begin with introductions. Of course, we have Ms. Gilman and Mr. Casey here. We got anybody else that we're going to be dealing with today?
Then tell us before they speak.
Okay, all right. So items on discussion, we will go through the agenda items for the upcoming regular meeting. We'll start with Ms. Gilman with number one.
So as is our process now, we have the first meetings on Tuesday that are the library, flight control, and jail district for their minutes and budget amendments or and demands. So those will, of course, there's no other business on those agendas next week.
Okay.
I'm going to do something a little different. I want to skip the regular meeting right now, and we'll go to these other agendas for next week that are the work sessions, just because I don't want to forget.
Okay, okay, okay.
Sometimes get caught up.
We're going to the regular.
Yeah, so then on Tuesday, March 25th, we have a work session with the courts on the judicial system. This is one that they requested. That's at 1:00 Tuesday after our regular meeting.
This one.
So, sorry, I'm stuck shifting our papers.
That's all right.
I just didn't want to forget these.
Session Tuesday, March 25th at 1:00.
Yep.
And that is related to the structure, operations, and goals of the judicial system.
Yep, so they requested this work session as kind of a primer before we get into budget for them.
And who is going to be here for that?
That will be the court administrator, Nelson Flores, the presiding judge, Judge Thorne. I believe you'll see some folks from probation as well as the clerk of the court. That covers it. So they're going to give you an overview, and that will, that way, when they get to their budget, you'll be more aware.
Maybe.
And so they have several attachments on for that work session. So give yourself some time to.
Yeah.
One of five.
Yeah.
On the budget, then at 2:00, we have a budget work session for the Benson Constable.
Do this one. Yeah. We got to figure this constable thing out.
They just have to, like, don't they have to file?
Yeah.
That's what I'm going to, we're going to brief you on, and I've asked the county attorney to provide some advice as well regarding the salary of Benson Constable. So we'll have that discussion.
We, there's another side to that. I know, we'll wait for this work session, but I mean, the apportionment of work is an issue with that because the constable's here Vista, because of the size of Sierra Vista.
Has a lot.
Has a lot of work. So there's a, there's a value to that because they fill out those forms and they get reimbursed.
And statute describes.
Right, so the guys, the guys in Benson and Wilcox don't see as much. So it would, we'll have to address this with the legislature.
Those correspond with the Justice of the Peace districts.
Right.
So Douglas has, Douglas does not have a constable currently?
Just the Justice of the Peace.
Justice of the Peace.
But we, we got to, we got to work this out with the legislature. We're going to have to go talk to them about creating a sort of baseline salary for those guys and then a schedule for the work that they do. If not, we're not going to get.
But we can go for that.
Yeah, nobody's going to run for those offices, and you're going to end up having one constable in the county, and we should definitely have more than one. But that's, I think that's going to need a legislative fix. Rural counties have a challenge.
Yeah. And then at 10:00 on Thursday, moving to Thursday, we have that follow-up meeting work session on the meeting procedures and rules.
Okay.
And so I.
I got to get going on that. Yeah, yeah.
There's nothing, is there something electronic that you can send? Because I know I have a paper.
I think, yes, the clerk has that full draft. She can send it to you electronically.
Work session, you could bring and add anything you want. It doesn't come official until we.
Vote on it.
Vote on it and do it right. But you can bring in anything you want. You can add as well. Mr. Crosby.
There was quite a bit of stuff that I had presented to Ms. Owenheim prior to the last time that we talked to that, I talked about this issue, and perhaps that could be reset to my colleagues.
What I'm thinking we should do is start just compiling a list. I can say all these are rules. Now, we can't vote on them, obviously, but we could just throw them all on a, try to put them in some kind of order, and then we can have a meeting, and then we could vote yes or no, 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 yes, yes, no, 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 on, on all those. I mean, that's my, what do you guys think? I think that's.
I like, I like the idea that I had about adopting the book that all.
There's too much in that book.
Add them.
Yeah, so again, I, I got a copy about the House and the Senate rules, which I think are pretty, pretty good. There's some stuff in what you gave us that's, that's good. Not all of it, but I mean, there's, because there's a lot of new that doesn't apply to us.
In long visit.
Yeah, but you're, you're going to create this, this thick book. What I would like to do is, I want the Cliff's Notes version of that, right? So I get where you're coming.
You know, as long as we end up with something.
Yeah, yeah, something, I agree with you, yeah. But I think first, first, we could just, we could build, build a list and just, just like the legislature has, right? They have the Senate rules, they have the House rules, the federal government does that. We could build our own little.
And then as we go, right, we could always need to amend it.
That's right, that's right. You can just say, I want to add a rule, and you just put it on the agenda, and we just vote it. I mean, that's, I think that's the way it goes.
Well, we'll see.
All right.
I mean, I don't know, I don't know. Depends on what it looks like, right?
Well, I think the first step is just building that list first. Now, everything on that list may or may not get voted in by us as a, as a group. But I mean, at least we get that list compiled first.
So we build a good foundation.
Yeah, and then we could go through them, because in order to say yes or no, we have to be unofficial.
How long do you think that's going to take?
I think we gave it an hour, but.
You think an hour? I think it, I mean.
That's what we did.
Started on it, I got to like seven. So I had, I had seven rules that I was going with, and then.
What, what, what original, and then what?
We gave you an hour, but there's nothing again until one. So if you go along, it's.
It's not possible.
A lot, a lot of it is just like Roberts rules type stuff, you know, and then.
But yeah, we'll resend the draft procedures as well as our current resolution of meeting rules and procedures that's.
And then what?
That we operate under.
Supervisor Cosby said.
So if you follow, if you follow, I'll give you an example.
Okay.
This is, if you, if you follow the rules to the letter of the law, every time we have a discussion, you have to, you have to go through the chair for everything, right? That's what the rules say, which will drive you nuts.
Right.
And, and will drive everybody up. And they, but you want that, right?
That depends.
All right, so, so, so it would be like, it would be like, if you want to ask a question, you would say, Mr. Chair, you know, I would like to ask a question. I'd say, okay, Ms.
Gomez, work with La Sota.
What's that?
La Sota.
Yeah, La Sota falls, yeah. So it'd be like, yes, yes, Ms. Gomez, go ahead. And then you say, and then you would say, thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, audience, audience, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair. You'd be doing that all day long. We'd be here till like 6:00 at night if we, if we follow that. And I know it's informal.
I will try to raise my hand.
No, no, but I mean, I know it's informal, but, but I mean, and then somebody comes up and talks. They, some of them have been doing that, and they're, they go, Mr. Chairman, Board, Mr. Chair. So under the rules, if you read, and if you watch a committee hearing, any committee hearing, everything has to go through the chair, everything, right? So, and then, and then if you don't, then the chair is supposed to advise you, up through the chair, let's go through the chair, Ms. Gomez, through the chair, you know, and that's just not us. That's not our style. I know you might not agree with that, but.
Well, it just depends. All right, you can't replace in English nonexistent rules in order with somebody else's.
No, no, I, I mean, we, we will follow the spirit of the procedural aspects of them. That's what I'm getting at, right? So the, what I'm getting at is, if we went line by line, literally the way you, you are supposed to do it, we will be here all day. That's all I'm saying. So, so.
Penalty box on the.
Yeah.
We don't have one of those.
We'll build one over here. So, so, so setting it, setting it up, to follow the procedural rules is what I'm getting at, right? So the way we are going to conduct business, that needs to definitely be memorialized in some kind of a, to your point, we have to agree to those rules so that what happened in the past doesn't, doesn't happen again. And there's, there's, I'm not, I'm not.
It's not in the past, it's in the present.
I got you. We're still, we're still, oh, no, no, I got you. I'm talking about.
Yeah, it's not in the past. No, it is present. I'm working on it like hours and hours and hours the last few days, this kind of stuff.
Got you.
You know? Because people didn't, didn't, you know, try to overrule the majority of vote in the board.
They did. Yeah, I got you. I read it, I read it in the paper, I got that, I saw that. But anyways, that's just, that's just my, we'll, we'll have that discussion in the work session, and then we'll build up a list, and then after the list is built, I mean, we'll have redundancy. So that's what the work session is. If you and I have the same one, or you have the same, we'll cross one of them out and just put one on the list. We'll build that list, and then we'll set a meeting, and then we'll vote on the rules. Rule number one, rule number two, rule number three. Just so you know, the legislature's got like 63 rules, so it's not a small thing. It's, it's, and a lot of those mimic Roberts rules. Some of them are different from Roberts rules. Roberts rules is the guide, you know, so it's not necessarily required to follow them. You can establish variants and modifications to those rules. That's why I'm just saying.
Okay. And then the last meeting of the week is at 2:00 PM on Thursday. So far, it's the last meeting of the week. That's the discussion with the attorney, Nick Rusing, with the board.
Oh, yeah.
With the outside counsel regarding indemnification defense.
I'm flickering, I have another appointment.
I, no, well, I do have lunch, I think, Mayor Manager's. I don't know about Mayor Manager's.
That's Wednesday.
Oh, well, whatever. I don't want anybody saying that I'm self-dealing. It's better that it's not to be.
Okay.
So that, that's at what time, 2:00?
2:00.
That's after our.
Yeah, that's later in the afternoon. The, the rules one is at 11:00.
Oh, at 11:00, okay, got you, got you.
And then this is about.
At 10:00, okay, this is at 2:00.
Okay. So going back to Tuesday, the regular board meeting agenda. There's been a change to consent item number three. It's now the approval and the appointment of 11 Democratic parties.
Wow, wow.
So not behind. So that'll be updated.
11, 11 Democratic PCs.
Marty's over there.
No, I'm just sending, sending subliminal messages.
Okay. Yes, somebody's, sorry, what?
11, okay, got you.
So that's, that'll be updated on the final posting.
Good for them. That's one of those, yeah.
Any other concerns regarding the consent agenda? Proclamation.
For, for public hearings, Mr. Kierkegaard, should there be an opening and a closing of the public hearing for each public hearing item?
Sure.
Okay, let's say, okay, all right, here's item, item number six. We're going to do the motion, we're going to do the, the second, and then we're saying, bang, public hearing for item number six. Hearing now, nobody wants to talk about that, we're closing the public hearing, and now presentation by whoever wants to present about it, discussion, and so on and so forth, and vote on it, it passes. Go to item number seven, another public hearing item. You do the motion, you do the second, you open the public hearing. You say, does anybody want to talk about this? You say, no, we don't want to talk about this, and so you close your hearing. So you, you open and close it for each item.
You can't do that, you don't do that.
Okay.
Kind of the call topic that, what our practice is, I think, is someone wants to speak to a specific open meeting, you know, a public issue that we have on a public hearing. There may, where the administration, like, they want to speak to a specific agenda item.
And that, that works. Yeah, now I have the voice of God.
Just wondering, so either way. I, I just say, just open the public hearing once and then go through both the agenda items, then close.
So.
That's a, that's approved, that's what we'll do.
Yeah, I, I'm a, you know, big on public transparency and participation that, that goes in that direction on the spectrum, so you're allowing more participation. The downside to consider is it will make our meetings longer, most likely.
Just adopt, did this go through the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Correct, so now they come to the board for final approval.
This was just, we're doing, they approved this.
Correct, I believe both these agenda items, the board, the planning and zoning made a recommendation for approval to the board.
And our chairperson, the Planning and Zoning Commission, is right here present. What does that mean? It is the pew.
I would just like to, you know, no, I don't know if it's possible, do it in the work session or have a little bit of a heads up, like, did it pass unanimously?
That's in the presentation that's attached to these.
Okay, that's, so it's on the.
It's in the, in the presentation that Matthew will provide, is that.
Is there any way to find out a little bit before the day of? Because sometimes, I don't know, I'm just, well, it's, yeah, or something that could be.
Yeah, the minutes are, and, and it's attached on the agenda items, so when it's posted on front, and you can look at it now.
Okay.
On, in Agenda Quick, yeah, so it's all there.
Okay, that, that would be a lot of helpful, I think, for me, trying to, because this seems, the planning and zoning seems to be a very controversial sometimes, and you know, I'd rather, I don't want to make any habit of going against the planning and zoning, but it helps me if I can read what was going on.
Sure.
So that I understand why.
And so on item six and on item seven, there are several attachments for those items. There's the, the presentation by staff, there's public input forms that I believe they have some, the, the original application. So all of that is in Agenda Quick now for you to review, and it will be posted for the public on Friday.
If it's in Agenda Quick, so the date of the meeting, so if you see the following.
Uh huh, yeah.
The, the date of the planning and zoning.
Oh, the planning and zoning meeting? Yes, it's probably at the end of the staff, at least.
Oh, I saw Matthew here, there he is, over there. Can you come up for a second? I got a, I got a question. This was related to the other, other, I sent you an email about the, you know, the the 2.0 or, or one, whatever, revisit with the RU4 with the mobile home thing.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I went out and met with him and talked to him. Evidently, there was a zoning, or, you know, they, they have a YouTube channel called The Tiny Shiny folks, that they had the same deal, that they had that converted to RU4 with stipulation that they don't put a mobile home on the property. And, and I guess he's asking, what was the guy's name again?
The applicant for Tuesday.
No, no, the other, the guy, the guy that we.
Yeah, Jeff Diddy.
What is it?
Jeff Diddy.
Yeah, 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 so he, that, I know it's not on the thing, I'm trying to get an understanding because I'm looking here, we have another similar.
Situation.
Similar situation. So that restriction under RU4 wasn't on the one that we shot down, that you can't put a mobile home. That was the argument that the folks in the audience were saying, that if we approved it, he would have been able to put a mobile home on it. But he later, I went out and talked to him, he said there was a, another parcel that was out there near there, that there was stipulation that converting to RU4, you could not, you agreed as part of the stipulation. Is that, is that something that we have written in like an ordinance somewhere? Or is that just something we can throw on?
Mr. Chair, members of the board. So there was a rezoning back in 2020, the Tiny Shiny rezoning.
Yeah.
At that time, the Board of Supervisors did implement special conditions, one of which was prohibiting mobile homes and manufactured homes. Staff tends to avoid that because of the enforcement issue long term. So the original application for Mr. Diddy that came through did not come through with any conditions, and none were recommended by the commission or staff. Mr. Prince subsequently filed an application to RU4 on the heels of the board's denial of Mr. Diddy's application. Planning and zoning recommended that condition. We're supporting Planning and Zoning Commission on that. We're recommending that condition as well, with the understanding that we will have a future application from Mr. Diddy his second time through, and we could add the condition to that as well.
Yeah, I think that's the fix.
Talking about planning and zoning, I just wanted to mention it, that I think maybe you guys, I don't know, Supervisor Crosby and Antonori, I was thinking we could have agreed a meeting before, because a lot of them don't even know us, we're new. And so I think it would be good, because I feel like I need to get a real good understanding of this whole zoning issue, because it comes up a lot, and now the opt-out community is coming to me, and I'm trying to figure out, you know, people who want, I understand, to build a, you know, a house with a foundation versus, you know, the mobile home versus the opt-out, and it's kind of seems like it's all getting intertwined. And I know the opt-out committee was saying, well, maybe we need an area that's just for opt-out. Maybe, you know, I think I talked, we were talking about some kind of compromise between RU4 and, what is it, S1?
S1.
Yeah, so I'm finding that I really need to understand this more. So I think meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission before their meeting on 4:00 next month would be just good for us, you know, to have them meet us and us meet them. And then after that, I would like to have just like a work session with planning and zoning, and see what kind of, you know, things they may see that they need to change. I think also, I'd like to, to suggest that some, that members attend at least, you know, it's once a month. I think they should be here in person. I know I have somebody that never comes in person, and I, I think it makes a big difference. So I'd like to just have that discussion if they feel the same way, what kind of changes we need to think as we go forward. So just to get their feedback. That would be after the meeting.
I mean, and then there's, you know, some of the things that I want to look at, too, is some of the appeals.
Right.
Stuff for people to appeal things, whereas the person applying for the application gets to appeal, but maybe a neighbor doesn't get to appeal. And we might have, and I, I don't know if I spoke with you or with Cox work, Cox work on that.
On the special, special event.
On the special event permits, yeah, on the ability for citizens to appeal that. But evidently, right now, the only appeal is the guy that gets the permit denied can appeal, but if the permit gets approved, the people, the neighbors don't get to appeal the approval under the current ordinance.
For special events, correct.
Yeah, yeah. So he told me I'd need to discuss it with my colleagues here about doing an ordinance change to allow for that.
Let it come under a work session we have, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm seeing, that's what, that's what I'm seeing. So add that in there as some part of discussion to maybe consider changing the county ordinance on that to allow an appeal process for, other than the applicant.
So I, I, I think we can do that meet and greet before the, a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, have the board maybe at the 2:00 hour or 3:00 hour before P and Z meets. A work session, I do want to caution the board, or hope, hope you understand that that might be pushed till May, because that's from April, we have a lot.
Yeah, no, I.
The budget stuff's coming up.
Yeah, I saw it on the, so definitely, like me, no, no, tomorrow, no, no, no.
Yeah.
Thank you. No, but as long as we have that in the works, okay.
Mr. Crosby, if I could digress to the meetings and procedures for my colleagues' benefit. We read it all the time going into executive session. ARS 38431 is all about meetings, so I have it up right here. I'm not going to read it all, but for everybody's benefit, everybody that is involved in meetings should be familiar with everything in that sector.
Can you give me a, a footnote or something like that? Could somebody give me a footnote?
I can't, but Laura could send you ARS, or you could even, I'll, it'll copy that. It's an open meeting, you can copy that. And it's all over, all, everything that we have that says executive session is 38431. Talks about all the rules for meeting, which, you know, everybody should be familiar with them.
Yeah.
And, oh, that first.
Down the road.
Yeah. The is, in case actual emergency meeting, emergency meeting.
I'm trying to remember, I don't know if Kierkegaard was, there was a county that did that.
Had a test?
Had a test for, for making sure, for legal reasons, they had their, their supervisors and their other elected officials, and then somebody sued over that, because if they failed the test, what was the?
The penalty.
Yeah. Yeah, there was a, yeah, it was, it was like a violation of the, you know, I'm an elected official.
Been there for next year.
I can't remember, I remember, they tried to change the law for the legislature to require it, and it failed, thankfully, so we don't have to take tests now. But someone did think of that, so don't, 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 don't think you're alone.
Or you could do some kind of interactive training with a video or something.
Take tests as part of their entrance into office. So it was like open meeting law test, it was the rules and procedures for conducting meetings, it was all, all that kind of stuff, and some supervisor said, no.
Like Cosby?
No, like Cosby probably, just for the, just example, emergency, well, who says what an emergency is?
Right.
When you look in, in the, the legislature, there's a definition for it, you know, that it's the risk of life, risk of serious bodily injury, or something like that, or whatever the attorney says.
Was it bottom?
Or, yeah.
Okay.
So it all depends on the, who's the attorney. All right, so we got the, we got the zoning stuff.
And then at number eight is that resolution for election day to.
To support the.
Support the legislation related to 5:00 PM drop off of mail and ballot.
And Humps?
Yeah, but it's going to go to the ballot. There, it's in, it's, it's in the process of going to be a HCR, so it's the same bill. So we're going to, I, I'm going to submit it to us to consider whether or not to support that.
I think we should.
Oh, but, but that's why it's on the agenda. We will have that discussion.
Have it, that discussion.
Yes, solicit of it. Yeah, so, so we will have that discussion on that time, but that's.
Explore.
Look, explore, there we go, there we go.
And then number nine is a grant amendment to a current grant agreement from the Legacy Foundation of Southwest Arizona for the Cochise County Health Support Team Project.
Is that the?
That's for our Cochise County Sheriff's Office. They have this mental health team support, support team.
In there.
And Hannah Watkins is here.
So the, the Legacy Foundation, that is a private entity?
It is a private nonprofit, correct.
And where do they get their money?
They get their money from this sale, I believe, or the proceeds of the sale of Sierra Vista Regional Hospital to Canyon Vista.
You know, Margaret.
And what was it, like, put in a trust?
Yeah.
And then they got a recurring trust that generates revenue, that they then dole.
Yeah, and they have a big board.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, perhaps we could hear more about the General Health.
Thank goodness, so glad we got you.
All right, sir, Mr. Watkins, it's all yours, or deputy, or commander, commander, sorry.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Supervisor Crosby, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to come to you and talk to you about this. The Legacy Foundation is amazing. They do so much for our community in supporting a mental wellness, food insecurity, they do a lot. I value your time, I could go on and on and on. In fact, I think I've sent emails to some of you guys trying to connect you with Dr. Alana Brunasini, which is the program director of this. This is an amazing program, and there's, there's a lot to touch on. There's, there's a lot to touch on, but this program, if, if I were to die tomorrow, professionally speaking, this would be the most impactful thing I've ever done. Mental health touches everyone. Substance abuse touches everyone. Um, our citizens frequently find themselves in this no man's land where they have not committed a crime. They're experiencing a mental health issue. They're withdrawing from alcohol. They're in this weird place where they need help. And unfortunately, our infrastructure is not. Successful in, in actually engaging that. If you have a person that, um, has a mental health issue, we generally treat it as though, hey, they need to go to jail. Or they need to go to the hospital. What do I mean by that? Let's say that you're suicidal, uh, you're a veteran suffering from PTSD and you have alcoholism. Family member calls, uh, the sheriff's office says, hey, he's suicidal. Well, that's, it's not a crime to be suicidal. It's not a crime to be a drunk in your house, but we do have a community member in need. Historically speaking, what would happen is the sheriff's office would respond to the house. And they would render the scene safe and they would try and engage with this person. Well, it's not a crime. Um, and, uh. Our go to is we call the, the nine eight eight system, our local regional behavioral health team response. That's an independent. Entity. It's a nonprofit, uh, I'm sorry, a for profit company that holds the Arriba contract for the region. So Crisis. Mobile teams from CBI, um, Arizona Complete Health, whoever has the contract for that region. They send out a team, uh, to address this mental health issue. Problem is, is that, as you know, we're a rural county and it takes forty five minutes to an hour for these people to respond. Typically speaking, these people over which we have no influence, they're private entity. They arrive and they say, oh. This person who's suicidal or having a, a manic episode, suffering from their underlying mental health issue. Adverse reaction to medications, whatever it is, this is a substance abuse issue. This is not a mental health issue and they leave. And now we are left with a community member in need, but we have no infrastructure to support them. That, that private corporation, CBI, Arizona Cardinal Health, whoever they leave. Forty five minutes to an hour later, the predicted outcome of this is the deputies have to respond. This person hurt themselves. This person hurt someone else. Uh, this is a recycling event. So we either end up burdening our, uh, emergency. Um, departments at our hospitals by taking these people there or we take them to jail. Uh, so in twenty twenty two, two, the executive team decided to propose a plan to the Legacy Foundation for. The funding of a mental health support team. I don't know anything about mental health. I will tell you, nothing humbles. Uh, you, uh, like having a child with a mental health issue. Uh, so I became acutely aware of. Issues with mental health and everything else because of my own private reasons. And there's a reason my wife is also a licensed clinical. Therapist and she created a, a similar program through the county attorney's office. Um, but we started training on this and we realized that. So response, third tier of public safety is what we needed, but I don't know enough about what that means. So I wrote up this grant to be open ended. Because we were trying to create something that had never been created in Cochise County before. So I had initially asked for three licensed behavioral health professionals and a detention officer. The idea being they could. Go out and they could respond to these events that were not criminal in nature. We could release the deputies to go do what they need to do. And then if we have someone that needs mental health support, we could drive them. To the Tucson Hospital for inpatient services or. Uh, some of these, uh, people that suffer from mental health issues, they have history with the Canyon Vista Medical Center or. Some of the local mental health providers and they don't want to go back there because they have bad services. But they will consent to go to treatment at an inpatient facility in Phoenix or Tucson or Yuma. Um, so if we can get these people help, then we're not burdening our jail and we're not burdening our, um. Our emergency hospitals. So we wrote up this grant, the Legacy Foundation. Uh, funded it for three installments, um, over a period of three years totaling just under one point three million dollars. Uh, the problem is, is that. We were trying to create something that had never been created in this county before and licensed therapists are few and far. Uh, between. They're very hard to come by. Uh, so it took us a long time to hire the right person. Through the grace of God, we ended up, uh, having somebody that is an expert in this field. She actually wrote. The Craig Tiger Act for the Arizona Police Association and she specializes. In creating these alternate response teams across the country. She just happened to move. To Bisbee and she calls me up one day and she's like, hey, I'd like to help you. And, um, so I met with her and she created what we call the care team now. That is what has been rebranded. And this team is amazing. Uh, they provide so much internal mental health support for all first responders in Cochise County. So a regional peer support team. So whenever we have a, a crisis, an in custody death, a shooting, whatever. They will have an, an actual debrief and they will provide internal mental health support for any first responder in Cochise County. And then outside of that suicidal subject, um, a death of a child. Uh, parents are arrested for a domestic violence offense. They will go out and proactively check on that child. And connect them with available resources throughout the community. Um, an example of what this looks like is something that I could have never conceptualized is in, uh, Wilcox. Wilcox PD had a, a frequent flyer. He was a veteran alcoholic, suffering from PTSD. He pushed everyone in his life away. So what he would do is he would get lonely and he would call nine one one. Eventually he would report something to where the police had to respond. And it's one of those things where a negative interaction is better than no interaction. So Wilcox PD responds and he attacks the cops. So he can be taken to jail. So he can have someone to, to talk to. He's not held liable for his actions because he has mental health issues. And so now we're just reoccurring costs and, and all of this fiscal impact to us, but more importantly, we've got a community member in need. So the care team, they saw that we were constantly being, uh, sent out there and they just went out and checked on him. And they, hey, I work with the care team. How are you? And they found him. Lonely and desolate and everything else. And so they went up there and they proactively check on him once a week. They spend thirty minutes. What this looks like is they string guitar and write poetry. They take him to the grocery store if they need. Uh, guess how many times that guy's called nine one one last nine months? Zero. Zero. So I could go on and on and on, but basically this has no fiscal impact to your budget. And it's a community service that is indescribable. And the last, uh, installment of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars has to come before you, before approval.
When I was in the border patrol in El Paso, there was a person with, with a cinder block on the corner waiting for a cop. Car to come by and, and throw the cinder block at the windshield of the cop car because he wanted to go to jail.
Yep. I believe it, sir.
First of all. So people do, uh, weird things to, to get attention. So, uh, what, do you have enough for your current level of needs?
No.
Okay.
No, but I recognize our fiscal situation. Um, and so I am vigorously trying to. Seek out new funding, um, for it. I have a couple of plans. The. With respect, Mr. Chair Supervisor, uh, the lady I put you in connection with. She's actually hosting a border initiative where I'm going to speak and do all the stuff next month up in Scottsdale. To generate funds specifically for this. So this is one of my chief priorities is finding ways to expand this team. With no fiscal impact to the community or I mean to the, to the county's budget. But I want to grow the team and I want to sustain it and everything else, but that is a chief pri, uh, chief concern of mine. Yes, sir.
What was the amount? One point three million about you mentioned that that amount of money for having something that that's the amount of money that you're working with now?
Yes, sir. Uh, with respect, Mr. Chair, Mr. Supervisor Crosby, um. We were funded in twenty twenty two is when we had the initial grant. That initial allotment was four hundred and. Ninety seven thousand dollars. With that amount of money, we hired Dr. Alana Brunasini and we had two, uh, Tahoe's. That were fully equipped with whatever they needed. And then there was some training and everything else. And then, uh, Alana went on a national wide search for. Uh, licensed behavioral health professional, and then we actually partnered with a college to create a, um. A tech, a program where we can create beha, behavioral health para professionals. It's a ten week certification where they can go out and they're, they're fully certified and they go out and they do the same thing that crisis mobile teams do. But we put them through the, at no cost to the Cochise County. We put them through this ten week program with Cochise College. And it was very well received and those BHPPs went out to work for like CBI and a bunch of other places, but we ended up picking up two of those. Graduates. So the, the team morphed into Alana Brunasini, um. Christie Reinhardt, which is also a licensed behavioral health professional with a master's degree. And then we have two para professionals that are like your crisis mobile teams, uh. That, that respond through CBI.
Um, you know. I spoke to, and, and we talked about my whole effort to make, you know, hospital and do a mental segment to it, mental health segment. You might want to reach out to Yuma Hospital because I met with, uh. Senator Brian Fernandez, who's the vice president. He's just got appointed and he's really interested. They have a, the, um. Mental behavior unit that they're training, actually, I guess. Uh, specialists on and they want to bring it. They want to do like a whole border thing. They want to bring that into Cochise County. So that might be another angle that you can reach out to because who knows who he knows and, you know, it could be kind of a connection. So, um, I'll send that information because he gave me his cell phone. He's really interested in. In bringing in Yuma Hospital kind of coming over here and establishing some programs. So.
Mr. Chair, uh, Supervisor Gomas, uh, thank you. I'd love to reach out to them and connect. Um, Supervisor Crosby, the second installment, uh, was given in, um. Three hundred and eighty three thousand dollars. That was given last year. Uh, we had salary savings because it took a, a very long time. For us to hire these professionals and to get the team implemented and create the policies and everything. So we had a little bit of salary savings. That's why. We were projected to receive the final in a check of three hundred and eighty three thousand dollars in July of twenty twenty four. But, um, that has been pushed back because of those salary savings. The Legacy Foundation decided to give us that check now because we need it.
You mentioned something called Craig Titan Act, I think. Is that, is that the name?
Mr. Chair Supervisor Crosby, yes. Uh, for context, I, I was sitting in a meeting where you talked about this, uh. Supervisor Antonori with Jennifer Graham with the dispatchers. The Craig Tiger Act is a statutory requirement that whenever a member of public safety, be a dispatcher. Um, first responder EMS provider, whatever, they go to certain types of calls or involved in certain types of events. The state mandates that. Those, uh, employees are provided a certain amount of certain types of counseling provided by. A high tier of professionals. So it's not like you could use a counselor with your EAP provider. The state recognizes that, hey, if you go to a, a child death where a child's been decapitated. That's going to necessitate a higher degree of counseling. So therefore only these level of counselors can provide that service and that's in state statute. Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
Number ten on the agenda, the, uh, drug overdose prevention program, um. Agreement has been moved to the next meeting. So.
This is table.
Yeah, table. It'll be taken off this agenda and moved to the next on the final listing. And then, uh. This afternoon, we'll have a work session on the housing five year plan. To go into more detail on number eleven, right? And, uh, so this is the resolution that you'll learn about later this afternoon on the housing five year plan. So once we have the work session, yes, we can send that item to.
Oh.
Pretty short agenda.
Yeah.
Um, and then of course you have.
Lots of work sessions, but that's, that's all right.
Yeah. And then legislative matters.
Yeah.
For you, Mr. Chair.
Yep. Anybody got anything you want to talk about an ad while we're here?
Yes, sir.
Uh, well, we can talk about anything or?
Well, if you like, future, future, future. Future agenda items, future work sessions, something you want to.
I guess I just want to. We emphasize the need to do the work session on the port of entry because again, you know, you're right, like. I'd like you to like update my, um, peers here on like why we didn't get that grant, which the grant sounded like we never should have even applied for it.
Yeah.
After we spoke and that's the grant that everyone swore was going to. Be awarded to Douglas and we were going to have that port of entry. And then when you read or find out why we were denied, I mean. The, the grant had nothing to do with it. So it's just very, very disheartening that there's just so much. Stuff out there that doesn't make any sense and none, I, I mean, I used to think nothing connected. Now I know nothing connects. So, um. One of my things that I'm going to do is go to the, the Arizona Department, A, A DOT's director. To try to figure out because when I went up last week and talked to Diaz, Griffin and Gowen. They don't even return their calls. So, I mean, this is something that I'm going to really hammer hard on.
Mm hmm.
So, um, I want to go up there and meet with him because I want to find out what the number is. It's still an illusionary project, right?
Well, it's, and, and as I mentioned to you, uh, on the phone, we, we are awaiting the draft con, or the design concept report, the DCR. Um, from A DOT for the connector road. That'll be released March thirty first. And so my recommendation to the board is that we have that port of entry work session after that DCR becomes public because then. All those design concepts and the cost estimates are much more, uh, public and official and they've worked through all their tweaks. So I'm looking at April eleventh for that work session.
Perfect.
The cap, I'm, I haven't confirmed it yet with A DOT and the city. They're still working on their calendars, but that's a Friday. So we're just still coordinating with those parties.
And do you think we can get some real, like the heavy hitters that can come to this? I mean.
Certainly try from A DOT and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, um. So, yeah, there's just a lot of stuff that needs to be going over. Um, the other thing too, when we talk about groundbreaking. In August of twenty five, that is just for the design bill study. It doesn't mean we're putting a shovel in the ground and putting.
It's the start of the construction, I believe, for the port of entry by GSA. So.
But that's.
And then they've.
But irrigation.
No, it's, I believe. The ground, I, I'm not sure what.
The gold shovel picture takes events.
The construction is going to last two year, uh, two years or so. So that's.
It's, it's just, you're right. It means nothing.
But it feels good, but it doesn't happen. Nothing will happen.
There'll be a bunch of people wearing suits and hard hats with gold shovels.
So I, I, I recently received a new, um, updated. Uh, Gantt chart of the project and, and I, I, it's in your email, but you probably haven't seen it yet. So, um, I can send that out to the board as well, but it's, it's basically. They, they start their construction. I believe it's for the, for GSA's portion of the actual port of entry. But it is a two year process, so it's not like it's going to pop up overnight.
And that's actually for a building.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, because this is the only thing I'm, when you're looking at economic development, this is going to be key for us. And then the other thing I wanted to bring up too is we talked about a slaughterhouse over on the side. We need to find out if they're building one in Mexico in Alcatraz. That's supposed to be the state of the art and USDA is going to go over there and. Give them the, yeah, exactly. So the rumors are half of people say it's never going to happen.
Yeah.
The other part is saying it's already being built. So we need to, we need to figure out what the real.
Tariffs. Tariffs on Mexican beef coming across.
Yeah, I mean, then we've got all these little small ranch.
They need to build it on this side so they don't have to pay tariffs.
So I didn't even know USDA could go into.
I didn't either.
Yeah, I've heard that. I've heard of this project. I heard it was. Dead on arrival, sort of speaking.
It is.
And now maybe it's resurrected.
It goes back to. There is a desire for that, even though. It, it, it means nothing to us having a stamp like that. I, I mean, nobody looks, it goes the safe way and says, oh.
I do too.
Oh, you do? Really? You, you check for the USDA stamp? Well, I mean, I never, I go in, I'm looking at the steak. I'm, I'm seeing how thick it is. I'm seeing how much marbling. I'm not looking for that little sticker that says USDA. But for some reason that is a significant thing. To have that on there for Mexican ranchers to have their beef stamp with the USDA sticker.
So I didn't know they could go across it.
I didn't either.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then we got those snoring pins where the cattle comes in. So we need to figure out how we can get ahead of it and, and benefit from it.
What we'll do is we should get with Laura and we'll have her put an agenda item out for us to go. Talk to those guys over in Douglas and then up in El Frida.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is, is what we can do. And then Tom, you're welcome to come. If you want to come hang out. Yeah, you need to, you need to.
We can do a hat.
Yeah, come on. But we need, we need to do that. So that way there, you and I can both be there and we could just go out there and talk to those guys.
And we need to talk to the cattle guys who like John Lad and.
Right, right.
All of them.
Well, maybe like set up a town hall out there or something.
Well, we could use the cattle buildings, really nice building because we used to have the Southeast Arizona. Something cattle or some kind of.
Yeah.
That got just dismantled.
The, the, the one in Wilcox is coming up, the, the Cattle Girls Association meeting. I, I, Gowen sent me the email on. Did you get that?
No, I didn't get it. So I.
We need to go to that and talk to those guys there.
Yes, and then, and then bring it down to.
Right.
I'll free the Malpine lad, all those guys.
All right, all right. So then. Good point.
Okay.
All right, we'll get with Laura.
Yes, banana news.
All right, anybody else anything? All right, let's call it a day. There we are at, adjourn until one o'clock for the. Housing thing.
Housing five year.
At one o'clock.